You will see be able to do your business here for the children and the county and all of our people here in Coffee County. We just pray for wisdom and guidance moving forward. Thank you for us. We want to start this school year, be with families who's been affected by the recent accident that we had earlier today in our community. And be with those families that are grieving of their loss and protect those who were injured. And we just pray for wisdom in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At that time we've been over the minute from previous month. It looks like she had motion to move it up.
Mr. Chairman, when they're supporting Dr. Lee, Mr. Jones will come in about he think the school starts too early. And I kind of agree with him. I'm watching if schools start August the third. I'll let him see first day of Labor Day. If you run the end of it.
There's actually, is there not a deal that's...
Oh, they're talking about it.
I've heard some discussion in Portland that there is some talk about that, but I know we've had discussions. Mr. Johnson pointed that out in the minutes to me earlier today. And so I think it is something we can study and look at the calendar for next year in regard to trying to start later.
We talked about, we talked about this a few times. And every time we talk about it, the problems have been the testing windows and the retest and all these different things that are set up that we have to kind of follow and certain dates on our testing and stuff. Now, if they turn around and pass for next week, what they're talking about changing the dates and they change the testing window, then it seems like, you know, we could, it wouldn't be a problem. But every time we try to talk about it and we've gotten input from, you know, best rates of teachers and all, they said, well, you know, the problem is you're gonna mess up your testing windows and all.
And the two of them are...
But like I say, if the state changes and they change the testing windows, then there would be a problem there.
Yeah, I was, Mary and I have been talking about this for, I mean, a long time, not just recently, but just in general. And, you know, when we started looking at the calendar, we've got from the time school starts to the time school gets out, we have 27 days that we're not in school. That's mine. And we looked at the old calendar from eighty-three. I think we had, still have one from eighty-two, eighty-three when we graduated high school. We had two days at Thanksgiving. You didn't have nearly the length of time at the Christmas holiday. Spring break was bracketed with usually probably Easter Sunday, but it wasn't a full week. It was really interesting that you can pick up that three-week period pretty quickly, but how are people gonna say, wait a minute, whoa, 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 you're messing with my family that always travels? I mean, it's, you know, it's just one of those things. But I think the testing windows are more about when we kind of finish school. But the start date's the one that we can compress by eliminating days out of school. I mean, it's...
It's, you need to have our semester finished by Christmas break.
Why?
Because we're on the block system.
Block is all that they...
They have to turn around. They have to give those end of course tests and be able to turn around and reschedule kids that didn't pass. They have to have a few days to rebuild schedules for the second semester.
Maybe not Labor Day, but until August.
At least a couple of weeks later.
John, please get your tape out here.
I think we're gonna study it and this is just an opening discussion here. We'll continue to study it and come back to you next month with some answers and begin to look at the calendar for next year.
Just off the top of your head, what's the frozen, what's the current?
No, I do think it's strange that we start school in the hottest month of the year. We've been doing that for the last 15 years probably. And I think there's been questions asked and I think we need to seriously look at it and see if there is not a way we could not start closer to Labor Day. Whether it be after Labor Day or whether it be close to the week before. But I think we do need to look at it and give a long study and see what we can do.
Could you work out the testing?
Those are questions we're gonna have. I don't have answers here tonight. I'll have to get with Dr. Evans and we'll get with our testing coordinator and look at those dates and see. But barring any roadblocks that would keep us from doing it, I'd like to see if we can do it like a real effort to push that start date back because it's, like I said, it just, August is the hottest month of the year. And we used to not start back in the hottest month of the year. So I think we'll study it.
How much do you like building August, Mike?
I'm sorry?
How much is to like building August? Do you know right off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, no, no.
It's hotter, right?
Okay, I mean, that's one of our hottest months. July, August probably are two hottest months, so.
Yeah, and I want to do some research on that. I said August is the hottest month. I want to make sure I'm right on that. So I'll get back with you on that.
It's the hottest month this month.
I mean, it has been.
That right, it's the hottest month this month.
All right, well, great. If there's no other questions about minutes, then we'll move forward. It does be placed on the consent agenda for next year. So there's no reason for all of it. All right. Monthly financial report. You'll see the monthly financial report. We're ending the month of July thirty-one. This is tentative, 2016, with $6,188,140.05. And this is our tentative year-end. I got you. Beginning, beginning of fund equity there. That's tentative, isn't it?
That, yes.
Until we close out books. So that's six, seven, you'd be... You wanna talk?
That's right.
That'd be your tentative closeout?
No, that's, yeah, that's our cash debt.
All right.
Well, we've got some accounts received that we got posted up yet that we'll clear out when we do the approvals. Make payments in August here under payroll, likewise on payables, that's $3.240. So that's why your fund equity drops.
For the $6,82,000, that's what I was looking at. That's what I talked, we talked about earlier.
Yeah, $6,82,000.
The $6,82,000 is your tentative closeout.
Closeout, I know, that's right. And that is gonna change. There's gonna be some adjustments. Are you expecting any large adjustments or... Nothing. Nothing with three commas, I mean, nothing with three zeros before the commas. Three places before the commas, not zeros before the places. Maybe not the thousand. What's a hundred thousand? Twenty-five, six million.
Are there any questions about the... This tentative July?
You don't have a $5 million invoice out there that you just have in the drawer somewhere that you got there?
Well, I appreciate the efforts of the board and all of our staff to put our school system back in good balance for sure. And I think it's worth calling it like it is that we're looking a lot better than we have been over the last few years, so.
Mr. Chairman, question, Johnson, why are we on finance, Dr. Leece? What's your thought on doing another salary scale?
I know we talked about it a lot last year, studied salaries. I think it is something we need to start looking at again this year. The salary scales, the state is putting a lot of that responsibility back on local districts. I think it is something we need to study.
What's the beginning of teacher salary?
Roughly $32,000 on the year.
How long is state?
Stays at that level for the first three years.
If they have a clear renewable, they move the next year.
All right.
If they're on provisional, they stay for three.
And after that provision, explain what they do.
And they move to, once they get their clear renewable, they get their experience and move on the salary stage.
So we got 21 steps, right? The whole salary scale. In my opinion, I think it should be 25. Because the old teachers, they are, you want to keep them, you got to pay them. That's my thing. You have to remove a payment. We need a good closure at that.
Yes, sir.
Again, they get a bonus number.
Well, everybody's getting the 3% supplement increase this year.
I'm talking about beginning teachers.
Beginning teachers get the local supplement like everybody. And then they, as they move up their first three years, they get an increase on state salary schedule each year, the first three.
If they hold a clear renewable.
And then it goes to every three years they move.
It's very many mistake when teaching say that word, you know.
If a teacher holds a clear renewable certificate, they just graduated from college and they start with us on step E. If they have successful evaluation after their first year, then they move to step one with three. And they continue to move, you know, step one with three, two with four, three with five, et cetera, all the way down the scale. But if they come to us and they're a provisional teacher, that they have to go through an alternative certification program where they go back to college to get their full certification, they stay on E for three years. Then after they finish and they get their clear renewable, their experience counts and they move on the scale where they would fall with their experience. And then they keep moving down just like the clear renewable did at the beginning.
Right off the top of your head, it's clear, after three years, what do those teachers do? They leave some of them?
Some do, but they usually get their full certification and stay with us.
What time do you want them to do three years? And they say they want to go back to North Georgia. They be ten, uh, ten year then, right?
Well, they have to be offered a fourth contract to ever stay tenure.
After four years, they be, I mean, thank you for doing that.
I'd have to look at it, Mr. Johnson, I mean, it's just a mixture. I can't say they all leave. With the business and industry that we have here in Coffee County, we lose teachers if the spouses are transferred any time in their career. Because obviously they're gonna go with him. Or if we hire teachers from surrounding counties. I used to think because of gas prices, they wanted to go back home because it cost them money to drive to us. But now the gas prices have kind of fallen down, so that's not really an issue. We still have them driving to us. They like working for us. And this year especially, we had several come back to us that left us and they're happy that they're back. So that made us feel good.
Thank you.
Another document found in the financial report is the East Floss. Statement. July, we brought in $435,250.48. For the first seven months of this... Of this year have really fluctuated, haven't they?
It's changed up and down.
As low as 539, or as high as 539, and as low as 46. Any questions about the Sloss? Statement. Out of state travel?
Uh, before we move on. No, we have, we have a comparison, Mike, what we usually do.
Comparison.
Financial comparison for the month.
We, we did not, uh... I penciled in one, I thought we'd, I guess we could scan this one in at all. Because it is tentative, we don't typically do it. But just as a point of reference, a year ago in July, we were at $4,753,990.04. This year, we're at the $6,180,000. So we're about a million more higher than we were a year ago.
All right. Any questions? Out of state travel? We have one request from the drama club or the drama class. They're going to the Alon Brook Theater in Jacksonville. Next item, number seven, we have the Children's Hospital of Atlanta. This is the agreement we have with the Children's Hospital of Atlanta for telemedicine. Something we've been doing each year the last several years.
From my understanding, people using it, right?
Yes, sir. I think they had some folks using the new clinic the first week of school and then they're using the telemedicine things on the campuses. But it's still a work in progress. It's... Still being developed. But I would say that we, we probably have one of the most robust telemedicine networks in the state in regards to public schools. Having the telemedicine units in every school and in the clinic at the middle school. It's something we can really be proud of as a community. Ahead of the state in that regard. The next item on the agenda is the Eastside Capital Outlay. We have the application for capital outlay funding for fiscal year 2018. And this funding will allow us to renovate the bathrooms at Eastside Elementary School. They need to be renovated. And we have the state funding available. The state entitlement funding program for construction renovation. So we're asking the board to approve FY18 entitlement funding to go towards renovations at Eastside.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I think it's appropriate, Dr. Leece, to share with the public how much money these students are, how much our part will be.
Mr. Travis, do you want to explain that capital outlay funding?
Yes, sir. We've got entitlement dollars that are already in the bank, if you will, with the state of 500, little over $550,000. And that was based on 100% capital outlay funding by legislature this last year. So that 550 will come from the state. Our portion will be about 14% of the total project, which could be somewhere in the neighborhood of between $7,000 and $8,000.
From the Sloss?
From the Sloss, yes, sir.
How much? How much?
Between $7,000 and $8,000 would be our participation, our local participation on that project.
I think it's important to point out the 580,000, 550 from the state. It's a reimbursement program. So when we do this work in the summer of '17, will be the summer of '17? We would, we will have to have the money upfront. They don't just send us the $550,000. We do the work and then we submit a receipt to the state and then they'll reimburse us. So it's important that we have the funding available through Sloss to be able to do this work.
It's also important when we discuss projects like this to share with the public. That way when we go for a Sloss, they won't get so against us. It's taxpayers' money. Just keep that in mind, Dr. Leece.
Yes, sir. It will definitely upgrade Eastside and get a nicer facility.
It's a chairman in?
Yes, sir. So that will be placed on the agenda at the regular board meeting. Included construction update on this agenda item. The construction update deals with the New Nichols Elementary School. We are going to put that project out for bid. The plans will be available to be put for bid next week. So the bid will be put out next week and then we will, our goal is to open the bids on October 4th. You'll see... A plan for the new school, it's up on the overhead. You can see the street level view. Is there a, is there one that shows the street view? That just the... All right, all right. I'll send you an email with a picture of the other one. Are there any questions about that plan?
We have to include all the projects.
No, sir. The Ag Barn was one of the big projects and, of course, we've started that one. There we go, that's a picture of it. So we've got the Ag Barn going and once we get this project out for bid, we will have the Nichols School going. I talked with Vic today and he said that the architects working on the Performance Arts Center have submitted their first draft to the state for approval. So they are sending their first set of plans to the state now. So that project will be moving along and...
Did, you talked to him about getting a start date for the school when it's busy?
We did. We talked with Vic today about that and he is going to include some terms in the, in the bid package to incentivize or to promote contractors getting the project started as soon as possible. Mike, do you want to make any comments on that if you were in the conference call to Vic?
Yeah, I think essentially he's gonna set the bid date. Bids due for October 4th, which will be after that 9/29 date that the state had stipulated. He still was waiting on the fire marshal approval on those plans. But beyond that, we discussed how we can get that contractor started, whoever is the leading contractor, started as quickly as possible after that bid's awarded, which could mean a call meeting, I think we discussed during that process. And then trying to see how quickly they can expedite construction so that we can be ready for September of next year.
We didn't want to put too strict of a time frame in there because it could raise the price of construction significantly. That was a concern with, with putting too strict of a time.
You need a commitment or something, I mean, I don't, I don't want to see us beat it and then wait for February next year to start it.
I agree, that's right. That's why we talked about a start date very shortly after that, October 4th. And then, but as Dr. Leece mentioned, no time parameter defined because that could result in overtime, which could put a premium on the bid pricing that comes in on those, on those, on that school.
What we'd like to see is it finished by Labor Day of '17, as we go. And I think in relation to our calendar conversation we had earlier this evening, there is some thought that the construction of this school could influence when we, when we return to school.
So we will get some ideas when they think they can start.
When, when the bids come in, they also indicate the number of days of construction typically, whether it's 360 days, 400, whatever. That's, that's an expected component of the bid package that they present along with their performance files.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Leece, what is the possibility, if that happened, do we cut it down to 170 then? Still, I know you have to do 180, but is it possible to do 170?
Oh, it's, it's possible, yes, sir. And I think those are conversations we can certainly have. It's something we're gonna have to look at.
We pushing the clothes?
Yes, sir. But as a charter system, we do have the flexibility to modify our calendar if we choose. That's the picture we were trying to pull up earlier. That'll be the view from 32.
How close is it to 32?
It's gonna be close. It's gonna be close to the highway as, you know, of course, the state has limits on how close you can put it, but it will be within their guidelines.
Are you gonna be, do you gonna put a fence up there?
You know, at Rockston, we did that. We put a fence around the campus. Certainly, we will do the same thing.
That's a fence one out there.
Yeah.
Because you never know, child, may one of you will expect it 32 out of 30.
We'll do the same type of work at Nichols that we did at Rockston. We need to back it up?
I think so.
Back it up.
Open that one some more?
Well, but it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fine. It's approved by the state, the state has approved the plan, there's no problem.
Who's gonna take the blame if it's gonna happen? The state or... The state or?
I, you know, it's, it's been approved by the state. Put it there.
What is located there? The state?
There in Atlanta.
What we located?
Not a truck. We're here. Not a truck.
You need to be checking out cheer.
Oh, I agree. No, we'll put a fence around it.
I think we need to push it by some.
I'd like to know what, what the setbacks are.
Yeah.
Everybody to be up there, fingers for business, nothing else.
Well, he's got it as far, he's got it as, as far back as we can get. You've got to keep in mind, we've got distance going there, but we've got to contend with it. So, you know, you've got to think about that. But we can get that information for you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Seawing is the original building there. That's coming down in order to make arrangements. So this is, that car running up from the front office right now, that, the back of this campus is going to be right up ahead.
I think it's going to be something the community will be really proud of and be real nice and come through Nichols and see this new school. Can be pleased. But I'll get, I'll get the footage of how far off the road it is. They did groundbreaking after the bid drove. We'll shoot for the first week of October and do groundbreaking, uh, probably second week, that's the contractor's name. It'll be early in October.
There's somebody up by the shelves. There's somebody up by the shelves.
All right. So that's the capital outlay report. Any more questions, comments, though? All right. Next item on the agenda is the surplus property. This is the storage building that we have at Ambrose. We want to declare all of this, uh, surplus property and sell all this.
That's Bernie stuff.
Bernie's jumping on what she's doing. Did you, did you, uh, think about what I said about allowing any of our faculty, if they need something for their classroom, out in there to be able to use it before we start it all?
We're meeting with the principals Tuesday of next week.
I'm not saying, if you've got a use for your classroom, if you need some of this stuff, we'll just be able to have a chance to see if there's anything they could use.
We'll talk to the principals about, uh, see if there's any, any of it that could be used. We're not, we're not surplusing that.
That's just the storage here.
All right. If it's, uh, okay with the board, we're going to declare the contents of that building surplus and have a sale.
How about the Mary Hayes Center? You think they would need some of that stuff, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I don't know. I just know some of our teachers sometimes say, well, you know, my desk told me that there may not be anything there worth having. I don't know, but if there is, I'd like them to have it too to go get something for their classroom first.
I agree with that.
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
But the Hope Center, you know, Mary Hayes Center, you need some of that stuff, maybe some cases. What's, what's the rule on that, Dr. Lee?
Well, we can certainly, uh, donate it to whatever group we want to, but, uh, the challenge is then coming to get it, pulling all that off. You know, I mean, but what we want to do is get rid of all that. That's, honestly, that's the intent. Most of it just costs the necessary store.
I go out and tell you while we're talking about that, because you got time to figure out what you want to do now. With that school, you're going to have some idea. They had that at Rockston. They got to tear their old school down. Where are you going to do with all that stuff? Well, they allow teachers and all to come and give anything they want to. And then after that, you still have all this stuff. They finally let some churches come and it, but then it kind of got to be a little bit of free for all. They kind of had to shut it down. So I just want to say before you get Nichols done, you think about what we're going to do with all that. Uh, I'm all for letting people get something needed, but at the same time, you don't want to turn into just a, you know...
At some point, it's just property of the contractor. They take it.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's, that's going to come up. So you need to kind of figure out what are we going to do with all that? Is there some that we can use? Is there some, you know, we want to donate or do what, or whatever, that's just before that school is built? I need to think about what we're going to do with all that.
Policies. We've got, uh, policy IDCH dual enrollment, move on and ready. We received a policy alert from GSBA stating that this IDCH dual enrollment, move on and ready policy. You'll see this one was adopted in December of two thousand, revised in September of two thousand and six. This policy is antiquated. The State Department has come up with new rules for move on and ready and dual enrollment. So GSBA is advising systems to rescind this policy and there's no need for this policy because the rules are clearly spelled out by the Department of Education and we, we don't have to have this policy. So I'm asking the board to rescind policy IDCH. Tax digest, and this is probably the the biggest item on the agenda. Probably the one that, uh, is the most positive item on the agenda in some ways. We're asking the board to approve the tax digest with the rollback rate. It'll take us to sixteen point one oh eight.
That's same as the user?
Notice right now it's sixteen point one six one. So we're actually rolling back the news rate.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jones said he had to leave. I might be going on that now.
That's fine.
What's that? So...
Hold on. What is it?
We advertised that we would adopt the military rate at this seven thirty meeting. We weren't aware what was done.
All right. So that's what ran in the papers. So we better.
Thank you, man. Then we'll do any leave.
That's right. Thank you.
Can we move up on their general, because Mr. Jones about to go?
No problem with that.
Sorry.
Come in to me and we'll just move it up?
First thing.
My person will come in and move it up on this.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, man. Team.
All right. Audience participation. Do we have anybody here for audience participation? At this time, I would ask the board that we move to executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disinteraction, or dismissal of periodic valuation of a public officer or employee.
We have motion to enter executive session?
Submit.
Motion to second.
Executive session?
Submit.
Motion by Mr. Dowars.
Second.
Mr. President.
All in favor?
We do have someone here for, uh, public participation, but before we do that, I'm going to ask the board to, uh, bring up the guidelines for public participation and we'll review those. The notice says, "While board meetings are public meetings and not meetings of the public, it has long been the policy and practice of this Board of Education to encourage citizens in our county to attend meetings of the board to allow citizens to offer their suggestions, comments, and concerns about our schools toward the end of regularly scheduled work sessions held prior to each monthly meeting. Of course, our citizens are invited to discuss their concerns with our board members at times other than just when the board is meeting. This is also true of the superintendent who welcomes your comments, input, and suggestions of ways to improve our schools. Persons desiring to address the board during a work session should sign the audience participation list prior to the beginning of such bidding be recognized by the board chair before attempting to address the board and otherwise follow the published guidelines for public participation contained in board policy BCBI. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact superintendent or the superintendent's designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the board. The board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings."
Can any of them?
Yes, sir.
What about tax ideas, Mr. Riddick?
All right, all right. Yes, sir.
Tax ideas will be coming up in our regular meeting to be voted on. I'm going to have to leave, but I just want the record to show that I'll be in favor of the rollback rate.
Yes, sir. Okay.
See you.
Thanks, sir.
Great fun with Mr. Jones.
All right. At this time, we have Ms. Ardell Sutton who's here to address the board. And I have talked with Ms. Sutton several times and so, uh, she's here to address the board.
How you doing, Mr. Jones? First, I would like to say that, uh, I thank God for this opportunity to address the superintendent and the board members of, uh, Coffee County. My name is Ardell Miles Sutton. I am a resident school system. I am a certified school teacher. I presently, I attend, I help with Mary Hayes after school program at the end times because I still want to educate children. But the reason why I'm here today is that I got a son that I was trying to see on the, in the guidelines that is decided to book it, that if a child be fifteen minutes late for a class, that he is considered absent. Me, I'm here because I don't agree with that and it hurts me because I have a child that he had some issues with his mouth. He woke up that morning, he had blood in his mouth. And I carried him to the dentist and instead of him wanting to go home, he said, "I want to go to school." All right? Although he was sick and, and, and his mouth was still numb and everything, he said, "He wants to go to school." Now, the problem that I have is that, uh, now I can see that a child is, is, is presumed absent if they don't even come to school. You've got so many that don't want to come to school and they'd be considered as absent. But this child, in his hurt state, and he been that way all the way up through school, in his hurt state, he would come. He would go to school anyway. So my problem is that he been trying to get on perfect attendance. But because of his mouth, I said, "Let me go and get this cleared up." I could have sent him to school. He had blood in his mouth. They would have sent him home because they saw the blood in his mouth. All right? Because he's trying, but yet he has lost perfect attendance because he was not there for that first block. They still working on him at the doctor's office. We got a doctor's excuse. But they said it is absent. He is, I, I don't care if he was there the rest of the day. And he did all his work throughout that whole day, but he still was counted as absent. That's where I have the problem. Now, if a child did not come at all that day, or they're going to miss almost a whole entire day, let that be considered as tardy. I mean, let, let that be considered as an absentee, but not because of, you know, fifteen minutes out of a block, which he still went back. Now, this is what I'm talking about. He still, when he even came back and he missed that first block, guess what he did? I told him on his free time, instead of going to the gym or wherever you was going, "I want you to go back to that same class and find out what it was that you had to do." So he still got what was presented in front of him to get done. But now, still on his record, he was not there, but he was there present. He was there hurt. He was there still because he wanted to continue what was set before him to do. His duty was to go to school, learn as much as he could at school. But yet you tell me that my child is absent. You're telling him that his works, that he doesn't matter. That's what it seems like. He doesn't even matter. And, and, and it should matter for us, that are parents, that make sure that our children go to school. My number one project is to carry him to the schoolhouse sometime, but we live right by the block, so he happened to just be able to walk to school. But I, hey, he starts out early enough that he can get there. Don't shouldn't be tardy. He makes good grades. I haven't had any problem. I had to go to school for him. But this is not him off of perfect attendance. Yes, he have health issues, but yet he still going despite of health issues. So I would like to recommend to the, to the board that they need to readdress this. Readdress it. Think about what it's doing to that child that wants to do something, wants to be something and want to have something to say, "I, I did this" and not because that you were, you were, you were taken from me. To me, it's like it's taken from him because it made him hurt because he said, "I done did everything I could, mama." But yet, it ain't good enough. But I would like for y'all to address that again, please, sir. And if it's matters involved, I would like for you to address that situation because there's so many children coming along. Some of them kept they there or not. This child declared he's glad to be there. He wants to be there. And he ain't nobody, hey, he ain't nobody's pushover, nobody's nothing. And I try to teach him more values to learn and if we don't learn, they ain't teaching him nothing ourselves as parents. We might as well sit down and back up. But as a concerned parent today, I would like for you give him authority. Give him authority, but not absence. I got the paper. I done got the, the, uh, from the doctor. I done got that. He done came back to school. Give him and not only him, other children is going through the same thing. I admit it, my parents. That if we had talked together, but I'm just on the mouthpiece that it come from and I escaped. The other thing that I wanted to bring up also to the meeting is that I have a problem because I'm handicapped. The halls are long. Mm-hmm. I could walk all up until around that, that, I'd be out of breath anyway. But the halls are long and there ain't nowhere to sit because we got so many kids got to come down the hallway. But what about the parent that would come and see about their child more than what it would? We had nowhere to sit.
What school are you talking about?
All of, man, all of them long halls. As a handicapped person, you know, I would love that y'all, y'all ought to look at what's at the K marks, at the, hey, at the Wal-Mart. Invest in them little schools. Hey, man, let us get on it. Let us ride and go and see about these kids. And also, uh, handicapped parking is a little closer than what it is. Man, I, I, I just went to a meeting where my, my niece just got recognized for being, I mean, she was one of the recipients that supposedly had been getting Teacher of the Year from Ambrose. She was one of the recipients, but I got there and I, I tried to find a parking space. No parking space. Program had done just about, had done start, but by the time I finally got there, I was right out of breath. I was all hungover. How can you enjoy that? And I'm, I'm worn out. Because I had to walk clean from over yonder to try to get there to be in participation with this program. We don't have enough handicapped students. I believe that only some of the gyms, amen, some of the grounds that ain't nothing. We ought to put a little few parking spaces over there. I bet you, handicapped people, we're getting them. We won't have no problem about coming to any program that y'all have for us to come to because we want to hear what you got to say. We want to be a part of what you got to say and what you come up with. So, yes, some schoolers. Close to handicapped parking spaces for us. And we will come and say about our children. And we won't be fussing and cussing all those A's like that. But I thank you.
Mr. Sutton, we appreciate you coming out here and addressing us, and we appreciate the fact that you are involved. And we will go back and look and see what our policy states and what constitution has and see if there's something that needs to be looked at there, and we'll take a look at our handicap issue. We appreciate you coming and addressing us.
I got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
On that policy, if a child would have had a tardy, would he may prefer to get done? Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir, I'm writing down the comments about the absence. And then the Handicap Act says, the way I understand it, a tardy would not, would not limit perfect attendance. It's the absence. If you miss more than 15 minutes of class at high school level, then it's not documented. In that class period, it's documented, it's an absence from that class. So if it was a tardy, it would have been five minutes tardy? No, it wouldn't count it against perfect attendance. But when it becomes an absence, that's when it counts against perfect attendance.
Even with a doctor's excuse?
Even with a doctor's excuse. If you miss more than 15 minutes of class in the secondary level, you're counted absent from that period.
I'd like, I'd like for the board to look at that policy. Especially when we got to look at it. Doctor's excuse carries a lot of weight. Judging, excuse me, being to the doctor.
Yes, sir.
Kid never got in the truck. I know, I know the board.
Yes, sir.
You know, we do case, case basis. If a child is troublemaker, we don't look at it, but child, good kid, come from a good home. I know him very well. I think we need to look at it, to get a hold of him.
I agree. And I want to give Ms. Sutton credit that we've had some good conversations about this, and I appreciate the way she's handled it and felt like this was a policy situation that was worthy of the board hearing from a real parent who has a concern. And so I appreciate your, your cooperation, the way you've done it.
He can get by with you, Mr. Sutton.
I appreciate y'all for this opportunity, and may y'all have a blessed day.
I appreciate you.
And hallelujah.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and preach, man. Here's a note, please. Give me 50 cent worth.
50 cent?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, Lord. I want you to help me. I'm crying, oh, Lord. I want you to help me. I want you to help me on my journey. Want you to help me on my way. I'm crying, oh, oh, Lord. I want you to help me.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. I'm sure that's enough. You take care.
All right. Y'all too. Thank you for saying about my mother. Thank you.
All right, that's off the work session, but we have a, I'll take the motion to adjourn the work session.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We adjourned.